Welcome, welcome everybody. Thank you again for being here. My name is Shannon Gallagher, and I am a regional organizer with Red Wine and Blue, and I tend to monitor central Ohio area. I lived in Dublin, kids went through Dublin City Schools, and then one in, uh, went through Grandview at the high school there. I'm joined tonight by my fabulous state director Jen Perez, who's behind the scenes tonight, and our good friends at School Board School, who are the experts in all things school boards. Uh, school boards are important, and that's why you guys are here. So we appreciate you sharing an hour of your night with us. We are gonna stick to that hour and get you on to the rest of your evening. There are over 600 school districts in Ohio, and most people don't know that. And most of those school boards have elections this November. And unfortunately, I'm hearing from far too many people that they aren't even aware that there are school board elections. And um, so we're here to kind of give you all the information about what school boards do, how you can get more involved, so that you can be the expert in the room with your families and friends, and tell them no excuses. You need to vote all the way down ballot for these school board candidates, because it is really, really important. So without further ado, I'm going to turn the mic over to Elisa Hoffman, the amazing founder and executive director of School Board School. Go ahead, Elisa.
Thanks so much, Shannon. Thanks so much for having us. So like Shannon said, I'm Elisa Hoffman. Thank you all for joining us. We're gonna talk about school boards and the school board election. I am a former Cincinnati Public Schools board member and then founded School Board School. So what we do here at School Board School is we bring together aspiring school board members, so people who think they may want to run for school board someday, and education advocates. So people like all of you, right? Parents and caregivers, teachers, volunteers, all those people who care deeply about education, and provide you with the knowledge and the network to work together to build systems where every child can thrive. And so excited to be with you all tonight. We also have Laura Cover joining us tonight. So Laura is a current school board member in Shaker Heights. She was elected in 2021 to the school board, and she currently serves as the board's vice president. Uh, Laura has decades of professional experience in education. She was a teacher, uh, she worked in talent and human resources, including as the chief talent officer at Cleveland Public Schools. And so we are really excited to have her expertise with us today. Let's talk for a minute about what we want to accomplish. These are our objectives for tonight. So we hope that you, by the end of our hour together, are gonna be able to distinguish between the role of the school board, which is governance, and the district administration's role, which is management. We hope you are gonna know what questions you can ask school board candidates to help you decide who it is you're gonna vote for. We want you to know where to find information on the candidates in your district, and then take some actions, be able to spread the word about these school board elections. Um, so that is what we hope we're gonna get done tonight. Let's go ahead and dive in, because we know if you are here tonight, it's because you care deeply about education in your community. And so at School Board School, at Red Wine and Blue, we have always believed that school boards are critical levers to making change in your community. Um, over the past few years, the whole world got a lesson in this, right? First with COVID, when people were suddenly like, I'm sorry, what? What does a school board do? These seem like big decisions these people are making. Um, and then, of course, recently with this anti-equity push. But even when school boards aren't making pandemic or equity-related decisions, their decisions have huge impacts for kids in your community, right? So their budget choices, their policy language, who they hire to be the superintendent. All of these decisions have huge impact on the resources available to kids in your community, um, and what access kids have to different opportunities. So we're gonna start um, by talking about what school boards do, and then how to figure out who to vote for. Okay, so we're gonna start by explaining why we're spending time on this distinction, um, why this matters for you all to know what your school board does and what your district administration does. And the first reason why is because knowing this is gonna make you a better advocate, right? So um, this is really important, because we say often at School Board School that to be an effective advocate, you can't just know what you're advocating for. You have to know who to advocate. So who actually has the power to change the thing you care about? So that's the first reason. The next reason is exactly what Shannon said when she um, kicked us off, that it's a school board election year. And so as you're deciding who it is you want to vote for, one of the things we want you to listen for is whether or not the things that are part of a candidate's platform are actually in a school board member's lane. Is that something they can actually control? So for example, here in Cincinnati, a couple of cycles ago, there was um, someone who, a main part of their platform was that they were going to revamp um, the customer service department, that they were so frustrated as a parent, every time they called, it rang and rang, or they didn't get the right answer. And so if that was something that you had also experienced, you might give that person your vote, only to find out um, that actually a school board member doesn't control that. They don't have anything to do with the day-to-day operations of a school district. And so now you've given your vote to someone who can't actually control that thing. And so it's really important for these first two reasons. We think you're gonna be a better advocate, and you're gonna be a more informed voter. Um, okay, a couple more reasons why this really matters. Um, it's also important because it's critical to having a well-functioning district. So we know that lots of you um, may be living in districts right now that feel kind of chaotic, because you might have some of these extremists on your board. So you might be out there listening to these board meetings and going, wait a minute, can they even do that? Right? Um, and so in order to ha- have a school district that functions effectively, your school board members have to stay in their lane, and your superintendent stays in their lane. That's really important to actually getting work done for kids. Um, and then the other reason we'll talk about here, about why this is so important, is because, you know, we hear all the time, you gotta hold your elected officials accountable. Well, if you don't even know what a school board member does, how are you gonna hold them accountable? Right? But once you know this, so by 8:30 tonight, now it is on you to actually hold your school board members accountable for the things that they are supposed to be doing. Um, and so those are some of the reasons why we think this is so important. But it's also important, because as you all know, here in Ohio and in lots of places around the country, our public schools are under attack. And we believe that our public schools are a bedrock of our democracy. And so when our public schools are under attack, our democracy is under attack. And so if you're gonna know how to fight for public schools, um, and how to elect candidates who are gonna be advocates for public education and for building systems where every child can thrive, you have to start by knowing what's the job of a school board member. All right, so that's why this matters. Let's dive into the work. Um, okay, so if you were with us, we had a session with Red Wine and Blue back in April. Some of this is gonna be a review to you, but hold tight. Lots of new stuff tonight about how this relates to the candidates that you see out there on the campaign trail now. Okay, so as we get started, a couple of key things we want you to remember coming out of tonight. If you remember nothing else, we want you to remember that your school board is the what, and your administration is the how. So your school board governs your district, and your administration manages it. So that means that your school board is gonna establish the policies and the fiscal practices for your district, and then your administration is gonna do the day-to-day operations, the implementation. Maybe the most important sentence on this slide, though, is the one that says, "Your board and administration co-create the vision and the priorities for the district." That's where everything starts, with your school board and your administration working together to decide on the vision and priorities. And then everything else has to align with that. Um, and so let's dive into this a little more about what that means. So one of the main responsibilities of a school board is policymaking. So as it says here, the board's gonna make or revise policy, and then um, is responsible for the oversight. But it's your administration that's going to implement that policy. They're gonna create all the practices and the procedures. So again, the board is the what. It's gonna be high level. And then administration is the how. They're gonna take each policy, and they are gonna write all of the practices and the procedures that go along with it. So let's do a quick example of that. So in Cincinnati Public Schools and in every district, you're gonna have an attendance policy. That's a policy everyone's gonna have. It's going to be really high level. So here's one sentence from our policy. "The purpose of the policy is to outline acceptable purposes for which a student may be excused from school, to allow for the appropriate recording of student attendance, and the ability of the district to determine students who are truant." That's your what, right? That's a high-level what. But then your administration, think of all of the steps that it takes to implement an uh, a, 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 a policy about student attendance. So we have just three of them here, right? They're gonna have to take that policy, and they're gonna have to communicate to families what to do if your child has to miss school. They're gonna have to train all of the school staff on how you record someone who's absent. They're gonna have to um, know how to report to the correct authorities if someone is truant. So this is what we call the difference between policy and practice. And so it's really important for you all to know, like we said, in order to be an effective advocate, because if you go to your board about something that you really wanna change, and that's actually a practice or a procedure, they're gonna say, we can't do anything about that. And they're gonna toss you over to the administration and vice versa. Um, so policymaking is such a key function of a school board, that quite frankly, that's one of the main reasons why school boards are under attack right now. So for example, when I was on the Cincinnati Public School Board, we did an equity audit of all of our policies, where we reviewed every policy to look for where we might be inadvertently reinforcing inequities in our district. And then we systematically went through revising all of those policies. So I'm saying that because policy can be a key lever for change, right? And it can be used to either open up access and opportunities for kids, or as we've seen in districts around the country and around Ohio, it can be used to reinforce the status quo or even move us backwards. And so that's why it's so important for you all to understand that policymaking is controlled by your school board, and then to listen to the candidates on the campaign trail in your district right now for the policy implications of the things that are on their platforms. And so I'm gonna bring uh, Laura into this conversation now and get some of her input. So Laura, can you talk to us a little about an example from your time on the school board in Shaker, about where policy either helped build a more equitable and inclusive district, or where you realized that, oh gosh, like something about our policy is actually restricting opportunity?
Um, yeah, there's actually a few that I was thinking about. The first is actually one that the district didn't have to do anything in terms of the practice piece, but it was a policy that our school board had held for, I mean, as long as anyone can remember, which was, we would not take payment as school board members. There's something about that that sounds like lovely, right? Like we are so magnanimous with our time. By the way, no school board members make very much money at all. It is a ridiculous amount of money that we were even saying we weren't taking. However, um, there was sort of like a pride that the school board members wouldn't take um, any money from the district for that. However, if you think about who that might then weed out from being able to run and serve on a school board, um, folks if they have young kids and they have to pay for babysitters two Tuesdays and, oh, a month sometimes till 10:00 or 11:00 o'clock at night, people who um, you know, uh, they, they don't have the flexibility in terms of their job to just be able to take off for some amount of time without any other sort of numeration. So um, so that was one policy that we um, took on for this year. So the new school board members that are running right now, they will be able to make their $125 for every school board meeting. Um, so that's one. Um, there are a couple others that come to mind. One is, we had to update our gifted policy. It was actually, oftentimes the state, there'll be legislation that happens, and they'll say, here are some policies you have to change anyway. And when they're doing that, we start looking at them ourselves, and we say, is there something else we want in it? And we're gonna talk about tracking in a little bit, and that's something that Shaker's been sort of grappling with for a little bit. But um, so as we were looking at our gifted policy, one of the things we talked about is we really wanna make sure that we don't create a, a structure that is only for certain kids within the system. Um, and so we wanted, in addition to the gifted policy, a annual report that the district would be presenting out to the community on the demographics of the kids that are in the gifted program, um, compared to the overall student population. Um, we wanted to just make sure that we're continuing to, our programs continue to look like the demographics of the district. Um, so those are sure two that come to mind. There's, it's um, it is like, it seems like the least sexy thing um, to be looking at policies. But I will tell you, like, you know, in addition to my son always being concerned about whether I have control over snow days, um, I also will get people that say, you know, I'm really upset about the dress policy, it, the dress code policy in the high school. And my response is, you should definitely talk to the principal about that. Um, because that is not actually something that the school board does. Um, we certainly think about like the overarching policies, but we are not getting into those sorts of specifics. And I think it's, it's helpful for people to know where they get to come to the school board for, and where they're gonna have more influence.
Yeah, those are all such great examples. And I think that one, too, of, you know, whether or not you pay yourself is such a great equity example, right? Of like, who can actually do this job in the first place? It is a huge time commitment for only $125 a meeting, but even when you take that away, yes, like, how, how could you do this? If you, yes, that's such a great example. Um, and then, yes, these examples of um, the school district has an overarching dress code policy, and then each school gets to decide the specifics. Are they gonna wear uniforms? You know, those kinds of specifics. And so knowing who to go to, um, really great examples. So let's talk about one of the other things that a school board is responsible for. So another really important function of the board is that they um, generally oversee and approve the budget. But your administration, which in this case is led by your treasurer, they're gonna allocate the financial resources. And so this is, again, one of the main duties of your school board. You'll hear oftentimes people describe that as they need to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars. So again, this is high level. They should not be going line by line through a budget, right? This goes back to what I was saying on that first slide, where I said, this is the most important sentence, right? Is this one about co-creating the vision and priorities? Because once you have that, your administration should go to your school board with a budget that aligns with the vision and the priorities and the goals that have been established for your district. And so as we think about creating more equitable districts, the budget is such a key lever. And so again, we want you to be listening for candidates and what they're saying. They're gonna be spending the limited taxpayer dollars on in your district. And so that's why we want you to know that this is a function of your school board. Um, again, a really important note here is, you know, in Cincinnati Public Schools and a number of districts around the state, uh, we have an equity policy, and we'll chat in a link to that, and it is in your handout, too. Um, and so this is really important when it comes to the budget, because our equity policy clearly states that we wanna be allocating for equity, not equally. Those two things are very, very different. There's a big difference between budgeting and spending your money equally, um, and budgeting and spending it equitably. And so we really encourage you to think about, does your district have an equity policy? And if they don't, maybe that's one of the things you wanna be asking candidates about on the campaign trail. Um, another really important thing to know about the budget is that all of this budgeting has to happen in public. Okay? And so your school board should be building in time for public input into the budgeting process, and you do not need to be experts in state funding to give your input. I don't know who amongst us are experts in uh, public funding of, of taxpayer dollars, right? You need to know, what do you think is important that you wanna make sure your board is budgeting for? So for example, we know that coming out of COVID, there is a mental health crisis um, with our students. And so you could go to your district's budget hearing, and you could ask, you know, I wanna know how the board is allocating resources for student mental health. Um, so again, we wanna hear from Laura, get her input that here. Um, so since approving and monitoring the budget is such a key function of the school board, um, what are the kinds of questions that you think this group could be asking candidates to get an understanding of how they're gonna use the district's limited dollars?
Um, I, so I think um, there's a couple things that come to mind. One, it, the, this is not to me that I knew anything about before I decided that I wanted to run. Um, and so it takes some significant homework to get your head around how the budget works. Um, if, you know, we happen to be going for a levy this year, what that process is like. Um, we manage the treasurer in Ohio, and so it, like, it does take some homework. So actually, one of the things I would wanna know is, what have they been doing to understand the finances of the district? Have they gone to, I think this is true for many districts, that there's a finance and audit committee. Um, we have finance audit committee. It is all citizens of Shaker. Um, those are public meetings. And so I wanna know, have you been to any of the finance and audit meetings? What were some of your takeaways from that? And then the other thing that um, I think a lot about is, in general, to what extent the school board members thinking beyond their, where, if they have children in the district, or if they have grandchildren in the district, beyond the school that their student is in, or beyond the specific program that their kid is in, but they're thinking more holistically to what you were just saying around what equity would look like. Um, so I wanna know that they're really thinking about, where are the greatest opportunities within the district? Where should we be putting in more resources? I will say, um, it is because of the questions that I was getting as a school board member that I realized I needed to spend some time on it. So I think it is, it, it actually helps just by saying, like, this is something that we really wanna make sure you're spending time to understand.
Yep. I think that's a great point, right? The people who are running for this are usually just average people like you and me, right? And so when they're on the campaign trail, they probably don't have a deep understanding of this yet. So I think Laura just gave you all some really good questions and really fair questions to ask candidates. It's not asking them detailed questions about public funding. It's saying, how are you, how are you learning, and where do you think we should be spending this money? That's, those are great questions. Um, okay, so.
If you have an operating levy or a bond on your ballot, knowing where they stand on that is obviously also important, if it, if it aligns to where you are or doesn't.
That's such a good point, right? Like, it is always, um, huh, I don't even know the right word. It's always shocking to me when I hear from candidates who are opposed to the levies, and always like, wah, ah, like, you are just making your potential job incredibly hard. Um, and so, yes, if there is, uh, if there are levies on your ballot, knowing their position on that is such an important point. Yep. All right, let's talk about a couple of the other things your school board is responsible for. One of them is curriculum. So lots of constituents don't know, or at least didn't know before it started making headlines, that your school boards actually approve curriculum, and that includes textbooks. And so again, I know in Cincinnati Public Schools, we assume our administrators are the experts here, right? Again, like we were saying, um, most school board members, this is not your day job to deeply understand science curriculum, or social studies curriculum, or kindergarten reading curriculums, right? Like, that's not our job. Our job is, again, going back to that first slide, we're gonna assume that if we have set the vision and priorities, and if there is an equity policy, again, our policy clearly, uh, clearly states the values of our district and says that our curriculum should align with those values. So with all of that, your administration should then present to your board a curriculum that's aligned with the values, the vision, and the priorities of your district. So again, this is why it's important for you to push candidates to talk about what are their values? What are their priorities? Um, because everything they do, from policymaking to budgeting to curriculum, is gonna stem from that. Um, and so, you know, I'll tell you that, you know, my kids are in Cincinnati Public Schools. My daughter did a project last year in eighth grade English class, where they had to do a book report on a social justice book. And there was like 20 different books they could choose from. Uh, and these books were everything from, you know, uh, John Lewis's March, to Mouse, to Being Jazz. Uh, and I felt just incredibly grateful that my child was being exposed to all of these different books. Um, you know, these were literally books that were being banned in other districts, were, were ones that my daughter was getting a chance to read. And for me, that's just really important, because she's only got a couple more years before she graduates, and she's out there in the world, and she's going to meet all kinds of people who don't share the same identities as her. And so knowing their stories and reading about them is a really important value I hold. And so I was really grateful that my district did as well. Um, but I know, not everybody, you know, here tonight, um, might actually have that same experience in their district. And so again, wanna uh, hear from Laura. So we know that in uh, some districts, there are school board members who have been very vocal. They do not want to allow discussions in classrooms about equity and about inclusion, um, especially as it relates to curriculum. And I know that you and I both feel really lucky that our districts, that's not the case in our districts. But we also know that even in districts where the school board members, the superintendent, are values-aligned, that not all students have access to rigorous curriculum. So a couple of questions for you. First one, can you talk about the work that's happening in Shaker around tracking and exposure to rigorous curriculum?
Yeah, for sure. Um, it's something that I feel like I think about and talk about a lot in Shaker. Um, we had a practice till about three years ago, where students would, would be tracked starting in the fifth grade. So based on somewhat, it, it started originally as um, a test score that you got in fourth grade, then it kind of morphed into basically, to what extent parents were able to advocate for their students, which is truly what we were tracking. Um, students will be placed into an honors language class and an honors math class. And particularly that math track would, it had such a determining effect on the future for that student, that kids who got into the high school and hadn't been in honors math, meaning they hadn't taken algebra by eighth grade, meant that they couldn't take at least two of the different um, progressions that students can take in our, in our high school. Um, and, and not surprisingly, because this has been something that we see across the country, when you looked at the tract, the kids that were in honors classes were mostly white and Asian, and the kids that were in the non-tract classes were black. And to such an extent that if you walked into a classroom and it was mostly black kids, it was not an honors class, they'd say, oh, you're coming into the dumb class. Like, kids had actually like internalized this to that extent. Um, and so we were already starting to move towards detracking, um, and, and making sure that all of our kids were getting the opportunity to take algebra in eighth grade, and to have this amazing rigor. I mean, the honors classes were just, in that, in English, it's just like you were reading more, you were more, there was just, there was such a cool engagement that was happening in those classes. And so we just wanted to level up basically all of our students. Um, and that was always the plan. And then the pandemic hit, and we realized that all of our students were about to be on Zooms with only kids that looked exactly like them. So there was no lunch, there was no band, there was no time you were gonna be mixing with other kids, and our honors classes were smaller. So the kids that actually needed more support on Zoom were about to get less. So we got rid of tracking overnight. Um, and I will say, you know, there's lots of challenges in terms of getting rid of tracking overnight during a pandemic on Zoom. Um, but it's interesting to what extent this conversation is coming up quite a bit, still three, three years later. Um, and it's very much, it gets back to that question of like, what's true for my kid? What was my kid entitled to in some way? Or I felt like they were entitled to, and that they're not getting. Again, we've, we're working towards supporting our teachers, making sure that we get to a place where all of our kids are getting that higher level and rigor. Um, but you know, it's not always perfect. And um, some teachers are able to like, make those adjustments quicker. We have more teachers that are in some of our classrooms to help with that as well. Um, and so it's interesting in terms of, I would say, the equity questions that are coming up within Shaker are much more around, you know, I, of course, I believe we should detract, but the way it happened wasn't good, or I don't like how the process went. And I think um, any of those really are equity questions. And I think, you know, in terms of, again, being on the board, like, you want someone who's gonna actually, I mean, you wanna listen, you wanna understand, you wanna make sure that cla- all classrooms are rigorous, and you want someone who's gonna be able to say, have you thought about it this way? Can I help you um, understand some of this additional data? People who are gonna feel comfortable talking about equity issues, um, I would just think is, is really crucial, no matter what district you're in. And then certainly, if you're in a district where there's folks that are out there trying to um, ban books, and, I mean, all the stuff that you all are dealing with all the time in red, white, and blue.
Yeah, and I think that is just such a powerful example, because often when we think of curriculum, we're thinking about, you know, this whole, like, are we teaching CRT? And we're banning books, right? And we don't think about what is happening in Shaker, and what's happening in districts all over the place, which is tracking and, and the curriculum that kids are actually exposed to. Um, and so again, I think for everybody who's joining us, that's a great question to ask candidates, you know, what, what is your opinion on this? And have you seen it work in other places, where when it was, kids were detracked? What kind of support they needed to make sure that all kids had exposure to rigorous curriculum? There's so many great questions there. And so before we move on, Laura, I'd love to know, you know, as we all listen to candidates on the campaign trail, what are the kind of questions around curriculum that you would suggest this group ask?
Yeah, I mean, I do think, there's something about, to what extent are they talking to folks in different parts of your community?
Hmm.
Um, so before I even get to like the actual curriculum question itself, you know, what are you hearing when you talk to folks in this neighborhood versus this neighborhood? what are you hearing when you talk to folks in this neighborhood versus this neighborhood versus this neighborhood? Shaker is very strong in their neighborhoods. Um, cause I want to know that they're spending time across the board, not just with the same folks who they would normally be spending time with. Um, and I think that kind of gets to some of these questions around tracking, like who is benefiting, who's not benefiting? Let me make sure that I understand that so that when I'm on the board, I know I can call some people up and ask them more questions to understand how they're experiencing whatever policy we're working on or budget or anything like that. Um, and then I think I really would want to know, um, what folks like as particularly in those places where the curriculum is going to matter, I'd want to know to what extent do they have strong feelings about curriculum? What, what does that mean for them? Um, I think, you know, my, my feelings on curriculum are mostly around like, is this actually a tested and true curriculum that we should be using because it's going to help ensure that kids are learning? Um, but if you hear things about identity or well, there's some, I guess you could hear things by identity that would make you really happy. Like I would love to he, hear that someone's like, I want to make sure every kid feels included and every kid can see themselves in the curriculum. But if you start to hear things on the other direction of like, I'm really worried about schools trying to teach beyond what parents are doing at home or think there's like, I would say like, those are the sort of like language points I'd want to ask a whole bunch more questions to understand what they're really talking about.
Mm-hmm. Yep, that's great. And I think that also goes to you had said earlier too, like, do they know something outside of their own school, right? And I think in, in, it's interesting in Shaker and here in Cincinnati, those I saw there's some people from Cincinnati area, you know, everybody loves their neighborhood, like 52 neighborhoods in Cincinnati, and that doesn't even include greater Cincinnati. Um, and you know, one of the things that we know is that some neighborhoods have had more power because they've had more privilege. And so they often have an outsized voice because they feel comfortable coming to school board meetings and calling up elected officials. And so one of the things we had to remind ourselves about often on the school board is that sometimes the loudest voices aren't the majority of voices. And so making sure that you do know people and your candidates know people in lots of different communities and are asking, I want to know what is, what is this? The, the families at this school, what are they thinking? The students at this school, what are they thinking? Um, and so that's a, a great point to make that they are out there actually listening to lots of different perspectives. Um, on, on what, yeah, what lots of different folks in the community want. Um, okay, so two more points about what school boards control and what's in their lane. Uh, so this one is really important. It's important to understand that the board only hires and manages the superintendent and treasurer in Ohio. And then sometimes depending on your district, there may be one or two other roles, like in Cincinnati Public. They also manage the internal auditor, some districts manage the general counsel, but it really is the superintendent and treasurer. Everybody else is recruited, hired and evaluated by your administration. And that's so important to know because I'll say when I was a school board member, you know, what I heard about most, whether it was from, you know, friends and neighbors, whether it was from somebody who came over to me at a kid soccer game or stopped me in Kroger. What I heard about most were concerns about specific teachers or specific principals. And it was so hard, right? Because that's not actually something I control. Um, and so it is my job to listen. It's literally my job. I'm supposed to be representative of my community. So I would always listen to them and then I would say, you know what, let me get that over to our superintendent. And I would send, you know, the synopsis over to the superintendent and include this constituent and say superintendent so-and-so, this was the concern I heard, can you take care of it, right? Like that's, that's our job. Um, but that's really, that's really hard for lots of constituents to, to understand is that we don't actually, um, manage anybody other than the superintendent and treasurer. Um, so we know though, that hiring and evaluating the superintendent is one of the most important functions of your school board, right? Who they hire for that role is such a huge determinant in student outcomes in your districts. And so as you all probably know, um, if you have extremists on your school board, it is hard to keep your superintendent. So we're, we're going to chat in a link to an article. Again, this is also in your handout. This is an article from the 74 that stated that half of the districts that Moms for Liberty flipped last year, lost their superintendent. So think about that, what that implication is for learning loss in your district. When you have a, a superintendent leave, when you have an interim, when you have to go through a hiring process. And when the extremist school board then gets to hire the next superintendent. There are just a long-term implications of that. So again, this is why it's so important for you to know what a school board does and to get people in your network to come out and vote for school board. And then finally, but maybe most importantly, the board represents you. They represent the community and they report to you. And so that means that they should be hearing from you and listening to you when they make their decisions. And there are lots of ways that they can hear from you, right? You can email them, you can leave them voicemails, you can go speak at school board meetings. And so those are all really, really important ways, uh, for you to make your voice heard. Okay. So now that we know what a school board does and does not do, we want to apply that learning, right? So, um, as you all know, the reason you're here joining us today, it's a school board election here in Ohio. So we want you to think about what you just learned about the role of a school board. Um, and apply it to what you're going to look for in school board candidates. Laura, as a school board member yourself, when you go to vote, talk to us about what you look for in school board candidates.
Yeah, um, I think there's, um, a handful of things. One, we haven't talked that much about things that are happening at the state level. Um, but there is a whole bunch of legislation that's almost, it's a game of whack-a-mole almost of watching what the state is doing. Um, and so I want to make sure that they have an understanding of the, what's happening in the state and that they're engaged in what are the things that should be happening at the state level. And then I'd say the other thing, um, we talked about is like, to what extent they know the whole community? To what extent do they know the whole district? The other thing that I've been thinking about recently, and it's related to, we have a, um, we do have this, um, levy that's on the ballot and, um, there's also a capital bond. And, um, we have a lot of divisiveness that's happening within our city right now about that, about lots of things. Like I feel like there's like, just sort of like an angst that the entire country is probably feeling at this point politically. Um, and, um, and I was talking to someone that was like, you know, they look for the places where it's really divisive to come in with a round of candidates the next time. For the folks who are going to be able to push the anti-critical race theory, the folks that are going to push the book banning. Um, and I think in Shaker, we sometimes think like, oh, that's not us. However, in the districts right next to us, including Cleveland Heights, that I would say would have been a not us as well in their last election, had a highly contested with some folks that we really don't want to be seeing on school boards. And so I think I also want to know, how do they work together with others? To what extent are they looking to find ways to work together? Um, you can't pass anything. I mean, most of our school districts are small, so most of us, not in Cincy, but most of us have five board members. You can't pass anything without three votes that say yes. And so if that's the case, to what extent are you going to be able to work with other people? To be able to understand competing views, to be able to work in some sort of collaboration? And also how to like help bring the community back together when there are these moments of divisiveness?
That's so important. Yeah, I, I saw somebody chatted in about, you know, in Cincinnati Public, we changed the policy for camping out to get into our maggot schools. It was so inequitable, right? Like you can do that. Only a small fraction of people can actually camp out for up to two weeks. Some schools you were having to camp out to get into these. And we changed that one to a lottery. And I think that, when I think about that experience, um, to what you're saying, Laura, you know, there are some boards that would say, you know, we have seven people on our board, you just got to count to four. And that was not our board. We had said from the get-go, if we were going to make really big changes that we thought were right for kids in our community, that we were going to do the work to get to seven O, right? Like we wanted to make sure that if we were going to do this, and it takes a lot of compromise. There were times where we would say like, all right, well, nobody left happy, but we all moved something forward, right? Cause like everybody had to give something. But I think that's such a good point, Laura, that you know, as you all are thinking about what questions to ask candidates, to be asking them like, you know, give me an example of a time, it could be with your family, it could be at work, where you disagreed with how something was getting done? You know, how did you address that? In really getting into that, it's just to see, can they talk through how to get along with others, kind of how to play nice in the sandbox, you know, in order to move work forward? Um, that's a really good one. All right, so Laura, what are, it's like one or two questions that you would ask school board candidates?
Yeah, I mean, I like sort of where you were going because, um, you know, we know that the best way to understand future is to know what people have done in the past. And so I like asking questions of like, tell me about a time when you advanced equity for our community. Hmm, you know, here in Shaker or your community, wherever you've been. Um, cause I just want to know, like, to what extent have they done this work? How do they think about it? Um, I sometimes even just ask, do you know, like, how do you define equity? But I think that can be a really helpful question. You said before, equity doesn't mean equal. And I want to make sure that you can sort of like tease that out about folks. Um, and then honestly, I, I'm not sure if I'm saying this in like potentially a snarky way these days, but I'm like, why do you want to do this? But I think it's helpful, right? Like what is, what is motivating you to say, I want to spend 10 to 20 hours a week on, um, this sort of side project or this side job. Um, because I do think like what's actually, um, motivating them is going to be really important. I say this a lot, I don't think a lot of people run for school board because they think everything's going so great in the district, right? Like they're like, they're, they are running because they think that there's something that can be changed. And to your point, is it something that is actually within the control of a school board? Um, is it something that actually is going to make a real impact for all students? Um, that's definitely what I'm looking for.
Yeah, those are great questions. All right, so we'd love to hear from the folks who joined us tonight. So now that you have heard what a school board member does and does not do, now that you've heard what questions Laura asks, um, we want to hear from you. So as Annie just chatted in here, what question? What question do you think you are going to ask school board candidates? Chat it in so we can learn from each other. What are the outside groups that you're, and maybe I, I like how Karen said pledged allegiance to, but maybe, you know, that you are affiliated with or that have endorsed you. You can learn a lot about a candidate by which organizations have endorsed them. So that's a great question to ask. And then this, what skills and experiences in your background are going to help you be an effective school board member? That's such a great question. Um, yes, those are great ones. How many school buildings have you visited? Yes, do you actually, that's a great question. Yep, and I would even say along those same lines, um, tell me about the, the school board meetings you've been to and what you learned from those about what is happening in the district and what you might change. You would be surprised about how many people are running for school board, having never been to a school board meeting. And I'm not saying you got to go to everyone. Um, however, that is always surprising to me. That's a great question. Where are you going to talk about your campaign? We'll tell you who they're prioritizing. Yep, these are such great questions. What's your definition diversity? Yep. Top two reasons for wanting to be on the board. These are great. Um, okay, keep chatting those in, but we wanted you to chat them in just so that if there are ones that you, you were like, ooh, I hadn't thought of that. You can jot these down and you'll have these for when you, uh, get to see your candidates on the campaign trail. So definitely jot these down. These are, these are a great list here. Um, we also have a bunch of tools for you. So, uh, these are all in your handout, uh, but we want to just quickly go over these. Thank you, Annie. Annie's chatting in the, the handout again here, in case you joined us a little late and, uh, and missed that link. So as you're thinking about what questions you might ask candidates, there's a bunch of resources on here. A couple of them are from the Legal Women Voters, uh, from the state of Ohio. So they put together a great resource of questions that you can use in a candidate guide. So if your district doesn't already have a candidate guide, you can create one. Um, and there's a bunch of questions there. Obviously, if you don't want to create a guide, these are also just great questions to ask candidates. Um, you can also go to vote411 and you can see everything that's on your ballot, including the candidates who are running in your district. And then you'll also see there's a link to a document called Preparing to Vote. And this was also created by the Legal Women Voters. It's got everything you need to, to know to go out there and vote for school board. It is a great one to spread far and wide in, you know, among your network of people who might be like, I just don't know anything about school board. Great, here you go. Have I got the document for you? Um, okay, we also included a link to Honesty for Ohio Education's website. They're another great organization in the state. And they put together a page on their website with just like a ton of resources on everything from how to find your candidates to what questions you might ask. We included links to the Cincinnati Public Schools Candidate Guide and Forum that we did at School Board School. So if you live in the CPS district, please read that guide, watch that forum, send it out to three or four people you know who are voters. If you're not in Cincinnati Public Schools, you should still check that out because those might be questions you want to ask candidates in your district. Um, and then the other thing we're going to chat in here is we're going to chat in a link to a document that's called the Eight Characteristics of Effective Boards. Thanks, Annie. I saw Annie just chatted it in. So we're sharing this one because if these are the things that make school boards effective, then we want you to know these things and be thinking about them when you're thinking about what questions should I be asking potential school board members, right? So we wanted to make sure you had that one. Um, and then before we move on, we want to make sure that you know how you can find the candidates in your district. So one of the amazing resources that Honesty for Ohio Ed put together is this document that, um, Annie just chatted in. It's a Google sheet where if you click on that, they have a Google sheet with every candidate across the state of Ohio. And they included links to things like their websites, who's endorsing them. So if you don't know yet who's running in your district, I saw earlier, somebody asked, do you know anything about this candidate running in Princeton? You can click on this and if they're endorsed by anybody, you can see at least who they're endorsed by. Um, so super grateful to Honesty for Ohio Ed for all the work that went into creating that document. So definitely check that one out. All right, a couple of other things we want to make sure that you know about in our last 10 minutes together here. So we want to make sure you know the Ohio voting timeline. So it's on your screen now. It's also on the Election Action page of our School Board School website. So Annie will chat in the link to that page on our website. But what we want you to notice here is that early voting has already started. So it is super important that you all take ownership over taking action. So spread the word that there are school board elections happening across Ohio. So we all know, that's why you joined us tonight, that school board members are really important. But you may also know that historically, school board elections have really low voter turnout. Um, and so we want you all to help change that. Um, we know that there's likely going to be a higher than normal turnout because of issue one on the Ohio ballot. That does not mean that there's going to be a higher than normal school board turnout. We often see that people will vote what's called top of the ticket and they don't actually vote for school board. And the research shows that, uh, one of the polls that we read about recently showed that, um, of the people who, who voted but did not vote for school board, 67% said they didn't vote for school board because they didn't know enough about the candidates and didn't want to make a wrong choice. So that's something that's entirely solvable, but it depends on you all. So what we're going to ask, um, for some things that you can do is that, uh, a couple of things. If you live anywhere in greater Cincinnati, at School Board School, we're running an election awareness campaign. And we need volunteers. So Annie chatted in a link and it's also in your, um, your handout to a Google form. If you have a couple hours to spare, you can go knock doors with us and let people know there's an election. Here's why it's important to vote. Here's everyone on your ballot. So we are not talking about any specific candidates. We are just making sure that we are informing Cincinnati Public Schools voters that there is an election and we definitely need your help. Okay, if you are not in greater Cincinnati, there is still a lot you can do. So first thing, learn about the candidates, volunteer on their campaigns. Laura and I have both run for school board. We will tell you, it is a lot of work. We need your help. So volunteer on a candidate's campaign. Um, you can also spread the word to your network. So post on social media that there's an election. Um, we want you to also post links to reputable sources like vote411 that we just told you about, right? So spread the word on social media that there's an election. Talk about it everywhere you go, whether it's at your book club, whether it's at your neighborhood council meeting. Stand up, take a couple of minutes, make sure people know. Hold a friend raiser. I was just talking to a local school board candidate tonight about how for school board friend raisers are actually even more important than fundraisers because the win number is often so close, right? Like there's often just a handful of votes that separate those people who win those seats from those who don't. So can you get 20 people to come over for pizza and hear about the fact that there is an election? So that's just such an important one. And then spread the word beyond your network. So if you have capacity, do things like write an op-ed. We just had two of our members at School Board School, one who lives in Lakota, a suburban district, and one who lives in Cincinnati Public, co-author an op-ed about why it's important to vote for school board, no matter where you live in Ohio. And so that should be published this week. Uh, so that's an important one. And then the last thing, bring friends to the polls. Okay, so when you go vote, So when you go vote, text three friends and say, do you need a ride to the polls? Make sure they know that there's a school board election. So this is within our control to get people to come out to vote.
Lisa, one other thing it's just making me think of, um, because actually Katie Paris is doing a double event for us, is that you're, if you're already doing events for like issue one or some other thing, where you're bringing people to your house, like also invite a couple of school board members who you think are really great, or you just want people to hear more from. Um, so you know, I, I, I just think like, you're, you're all already so tapped in and are all, and thinking about how you're doing grassroots organizing all the time. So I would just say, keep that hat on as you're thinking about who are the candidates that you think should be on your school board.
That is brilliant. You already have people congregated at another event who you know are voters. So tell them there's also an election and here's information on the candidates. Um, okay, so hopefully you all now know the role of a school board member. You've got a good list of questions you're gonna ask. You know who's running in your district. Thank you for the work that you all put in tonight to get to that. Um, that is great. So a few things before we close out, um, we have a page of resources on our website uh, called uh, Advocacy Tools. Annie is chatting that in now. We know you all are advocates. This page we think is helpful year-round, so we want you to have that link. Um, and then we wanna also just give a big thank you to Laura for spending her evening and sharing her expertise with us. And then also just let you know that if there are, um, if you wanna know about other sessions that we do about school boards and civic engagement, there, you can um, sign up on our website. It's just schoolboardschool.org/contact. And we wanna give our last two minutes back to Red, White and Blue, so they can tell you a little bit about, more about what they're up to too.
Oh my gosh. Well, thank you so, so much, Lisa and Laura and Annie for helping to make us smarter today. Um, now that you have all of these resources, our big ask from all of us on this call is to get out and share this information with your friends and family. Um, basically like the fancy term for um, everything that Lisa was just talking about is relational organizing. And it's just been proven countless times uh, that people trust you for information. And you are who's gonna, you can change the whole way the election goes, just by having those conversations with your friends and family. Like if you kind of, in my head, how I think about it is, if I need a babysitter or a dog sitter, I would much rather get a referral or a reference or information from somebody I know than just like Google. So um, I feel like we can just take that same thing with uh, school board candidates, information. And um, so we're gonna send you a follow-up email after this call with a bunch of information and this cool tool that we use that will um, help make it super, super easy for you to take all of this great information and pass it on to your family and friends to remind them the importance of school board races and that they need to vote all the way down ballot, all the way down ballot. I've heard some people say, oh, I feel awkward voting for it. I don't have any kids in the district. No excuses, people. We need everybody voting in these elections. But um, thank you very much. It is eight-thirty, so I will let everybody go and get on with your day. Really, really, really appreciate you guys. And look for that follow-up email and reach out to us for any questions. Thank you.